... invocation by Reverend Jim Sanders of Black River General Baptist Church.
Father and eternal God, we come to you tonight, we thank you for the many blessings that you have given us. Father, we thank you for the living in a country where we have the freedoms that we have. And we thank you for all of those who have given their life for those freedoms. And we thank you for those who have served and those who continue to serve. Father, we just pray your blessings upon this meeting tonight. We just pray for those who are in the positions that have given themselves a service to you, service to their city, service to their fellow man. We pray that you would help them as they make decisions, Father, that you would give them the wisdom that they need, that they might be able to rightly govern your people. We give your name the praise, the honor, and the glory, and amen.
Amen.
Roll call.
Councilman DeGarris.
Here.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Here.
Councilman Branum.
Here.
Councilman Tensley.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Russian.
Here.
Mayor Pearson.
Here.
We have seven present in court.
Disclosure of interest: any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. I am going to disclose that I will be removing myself from workshop item A and action-required items BB due to ongoing litigation. So Mayor Protem Russian, will you step in during those?
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else? Citizens input: each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the city council. If any member, any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may so request now.
And Mayor, the agenda was all presented to us in our packets. I make a motion to be approved as presented.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda as in our packets. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I will have City Clerk Pam Kirby read some balances for the benefit of the public.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Each council person received a copy of the consolidated statement of funds on deposits in various banks as of October 31, 2014. Those amounts are in the Commerce Bank, $1,895,313.46; in Peoples Community State Bank, $562,222.3 and $3 cents; in First Midwest Bank, $11,831,122.72; in First Community Bank, $231,563.78; in the Federal Credit Union, $80,550.72; in Sterling Bank, $66,614,819.38; and in Southern Missouri Bank, $333,609.39. This gives us a grand total of all funds in all banks of $21,553,415.3. Of this amount, total funds on deposit for account of City Hall is $11, 955,095.2. Total funds on deposit for the account of the Coliseum is $231,563.78. Total funds on deposit for the account of the Park Department is $779,175.70. And total funds on deposit for the account of Municipal Utilities Department is $8,587,580.53.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. At this time, we will move on to the workshop required items. I will ask Mayor Protem Russian if you will go ahead and come forward and work on item eight.
Workshop item A, the county, the city council will discuss the selection of insurance broker for the city of Papa Bluff relative to property and casualty insurance.
Is there anybody here that's going to speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem. We have Captain McLean has been the designated representative for the review committee. At this time, I'd like to turn this item over to him.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, I'm here to hopefully answer any questions that you may have this evening.
Does anyone, anybody have any initial questions they want to ask? I was just, I didn't have, I don't think it was in my packet. I just had this paper today. Is that right?
Right.
Okay.
Bitabulation.
Bitabulation. What was the mechanics, I don't know if Representative MSJ is here, what is the mechanics that were discussed as to try to obtain savings for us with regards to casualty coverage?
When you ask the mechanics that were discussed, do you mean by the board members?
Well, I'm trying to understand that, you know, of course, I wasn't present, I wanted to be, but I wasn't present at the time that the interviews were done. You know, one of the main things that, you know, we're trying to achieve is try to have savings.
Certainly.
That's what we try to do with the health insurance as well. So I was just curious as to what the mechanics were, the protocols, or the methods they were talked about, that you all were considering them for savings.
Yes, that was discussed at length. We hit those areas during the interview process as well as discussing that amongst the board members. Actually, I believe that was one of the questions. I do not have those in front of me that were asked during those interviews. And I wish I had my notes and I wish I had those questions. I could probably better answer this question, but they did go through routine procedures and steps that they take to lower liability, safety meetings, looking over, meeting with each department and department heads, looking over policies and procedures for each department, so on and so forth.
Okay. Is there Representative MSJ here this evening? Okay, all right. Okay. Are there any other questions anybody has from the chairman of the committee?
On holiday insurance, it just says commission percentage, no numbers. So what, can you tell me what they meant by that?
Well, we ask that. The other two companies submitted a flat rate, and I have those numbers somewhere here. Let me get through my paper.
And that commission is just a percentage of what the actual insurance would be, once they actually brought the quotes back to the city.
And I believe that was a range of five to 10 percent is what was quoted.
Didn't have any percentage on there, so that's why I asked.
Yes, sir, it was five to 10 percent.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And if I may jump in here for a moment, Mr. Mayor Protem. And so the reason why, you know, we have, you know, you have fee for service, and then you have commission. And the reason why, from my perspective, it's best to do a fee for service is that you have a firm that represents the city. And in that case, like with Aon, for example, they had to waive any, claimed any commissions, anything that we brought for. So that's why we paid them an all-in flat fee. That's what I was looking for, so it would waive any conflict of interest. That way, what I mean by the conflict is if, if we separate, where we have a firm, a broker, that's just representing our interest, that way we have a consultant that works on behalf of the city. They don't have any other financial interest that's tied to how much we pay in insurance premiums. And I've had the best experience with getting to the bottom dollar of a plan, either it be property and liability, casualty insurance, workers' compensation, or healthcare insurance, like we've dealt with before. I like the part where you have the broker as a consultant. So that way, they can be free to share their advice, they can be hard on the, on the, on the other firms that are providing the quotes, and they can really get you down to the lowest bottom dollar denominator. And again, not that I am opposed to receiving a proposal that has a commission-based aspect to it, but my perspective is I like to separate, you know, what we're buying from our agency with who is actually the subject matter expert in providing us with the recommendation. That way, there is a complete across-the-board, it's open, transparent to the public, and there is no financial interest tied to it over and beyond just the flat fee for service. So I consider it more of a professional fee, a service fee, which I like a lot better. So that way, you know, it provides an incentive where if you're making them hold through a fee, they don't make more money or less money, depending, you know, they look for what's the best deal for the city. So, sorry being too long-winded on that.
Well, the one concern that I had is, I know through the health insurance broker, we were going to have to get actuaries done. It's a different, it's an apple-to-orange thing compared to the casualty. And I was just curious, you know, because one of the things that the bid was put out there was to try to achieve savings. And I wish that they had a representative here tonight, because I sure would like to know how they're going to try to attain that for the city. I know they do good quality work. I just wanted to know how they're going to, and maybe how much they thought they could save the city to, would be a good question, too. So that's, I wish I had that. Any other questions?
These were just the three firms we got bids from?
Yes, sir, we received three bids, and we had one no-bid response, we had one no-bid response form submitted from Murma.
Yeah, Murma does not do a broker relationship. They just go direct, and so...
Well, we need a motion as to what to do with workshop item A.
Mayor Protem, Morris Harwell Giles is the low bid and is also familiar with the workings of the city and their insurance structure, and I make a motion to move this to voting session tonight.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we need to go to item B, and I'll get the mayor to come out for that.
Item B, the city council will review a request from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding the vacation of a portion of an easement between the city of Papa Bluff and Eli and Frida Osborne.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This deals with the vacation of a portion of an easement between the city of Papa Bluff and Eli and Frida Osborne. The vacation of this portion of the easement is to accommodate a request from Botner Investments LLC for the construction of a car wash located around the 2960 block of Northwestwood Boulevard. Staff has reviewed this request and would recommend with the advisory board's approval to the council. If there's any questions?
Mayor, there's no need for that lot to be sitting there vacant, and that easement to not be there. And we have someone who wants to put a business in there. I would make a motion to move this forward.
Second.
Motion is second to move item B to the voting session, December 1st?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the city council will review a request from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding the vacation of a portion of an easement between the city of Papa Bluff and Walter R. and Betty G. Parkin. Mr. Bach?
Yes, Madam Mayor. This item is on the same property. This is the second easement we had on that. And this is also requested by Botner Investments LLC for the same car wash. Staff has reviewed, and advisory board would also recommend the vacation of the easement. Any questions? Be happy to answer that.
Madam Mayor, both pieces of property are needed for the project. Can I make a motion to move this to voting session, December 1st?
Second.
Motion is second to move item C to the voting session on December 1st. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council will review the budget for the city of Papa Bluff fiscal year of 2015. Mr. Kaplan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So had a full week of looking at your homework, so to speak, for the fiscal year 15 budget. And as promised, like I said, we had the department heads in the audience, so in case there was any specific questions into their portions of the budget, we'd be happy to answer those questions at this time. But just keep in mind, again, we were, our goal is to have all comments in no later than this Friday, the 21st of November. So, Madam Mayor, I turn it over to you and to council to go from there.
At this time, if there's any member from the council that wants to make some comments in regards to the proposed budget, I'd ask that you do so.
On several items, and from different departments, I know that, you know, they're trying to forecast for 2015, but some of the requested items exceed significantly the previous year or the year previous to that. I'm just concerned about how that list of items summarily is going to get decided.
Capital items is what you're referring to, I believe. So, the capital items will be just, one, what we're going to develop with the list is a capital improvement plan. Right now, you know, you have bits and pieces of a capital improvement plan, but what I would like to see is in a grid date format, that fiscal 15, we're going to be able to fund X dollars. Fiscal 16, same thing, 17, 18, 19, and so on. Minimum, I like to try to project out as a five-year plan. And so what you see there is all of the years combined into one, because, one, I ask for them to give me everything so I can start developing the plan. But, two, we have to put pencil to paper to see what we can afford with our dollars in fiscal 15, and that's what I'm in the process of doing. And you will see that product that will be emailed to you prior to the public hearing on December the 1st. So the answer to your question is you got an aggregate of five, in my opinion, five years' worth of requests there. And we're going to try to fund as many as we can, but we're going to do it in priority based on the department's request.
Well, I guess, like, for example, and I'm not negating the value that's been placed on anything, but a municipal court requested 2015, $357,663, which considerably exceeds all the years prior. And, you know, so trying to figure out where does that added amount come from, and, you know, is it needed, is it not?
Yeah. And that one actually is, I'm happy to discuss, and of course, I have Judge Millian in the audience as well, so I'll start, if you don't mind, Judge, and then you can jump on in. One of the things that the judge and I have been having an ongoing discussion about, which I've enjoyed our dialogue between myself and Judge Millian, is the ongoing increased cost of inmates in our county jail system. If you look back several years, you'll see that the county has been very generous on being a good fiscal partner with the, with the city and allowing us X amount of reserved space, I guess we'll call it. And after fiscal years have gotten hard on all municipalities, they were unable to honor that, that, I guess, that generosity reservation, which we appreciate moving forward, because, you know, their fiscal situation has been a lot similar to the surrounding area and across the nation with the economy being poor. And so as their costs increase to us, obviously, as cost is passed on to the city, and it really has been concerning the judge, I mean, he has to make pretty hard decisions as to really who we keep in jail, who we don't. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. And you're looking at the gentleman that has to make those hard decisions.
Let me give you a little history. When I've been associated with the municipal court either as a prosecutor or a judge for approximately 25 years, 1992 and sometime before that. The dilemma for me as municipal judge is how do we handle warrants issued through the municipal court? And once those warrants are served, how do we manage the inmate population? When I first started about 10 years ago, we were paying a per diem rate. That's usually the way it is. Gave it a couple of years of that, and then I approached the sheriff, and he was very accommodating. He gave us eight bids, 365 days a year, for a flat fee of $14,600. That probably was not even break even, and I don't know his thought processes. But he gave that to us for about three years, and then he approached us, and I and the chief sat down and had lunch with the sheriff and said, hey, how can we handle this? He came to us after we had already had a budget approved, and I asked him, leave it at 14.6, and I will do something to adjust that population of eight. And in a minute, I'll tell you how I do that on a daily basis to keep that population manageable. I told the sheriff that it was difficult to come back in and ask for money in mid-budget year. So what I would do would attempt to reduce the population from eight inmates a day down to four. That was unmanageable. It was optimistic on my part. We're running about six, 6.1 defendants per day. The last meeting that we had, and we've had a couple of meetings with the sheriff, probably in the last 12 months, but the last one we had is with Mr. Kaplan and the chief and some of his administrative staff to visit with him early before this budget process began to determine where we're going to be next year. Because when the sheriff told us this year that he would do it for $20 a day, he alerted us, the red flags came up, that it, he couldn't guarantee that he would hold that. And so we set up a meeting with Mr. Kaplan, and he, and I believe he's told us it's going to be $30 a day. Now, I have some figures, but your average census is about 6.1. You can do, you can do the math. It's going to get expensive. Three years ago, it was $14,600, flat fee. This year, it's going to come in at $20 a person, about $50,000. At $30 a bid, next year, it's going to be about $72,000. Here's the struggle. As a municipal judge, I see the same type of people that are in that big courthouse over there. They're just doing different things, but they are doing significant things. Most people think of municipal court as a stop sign, a speeding sign, a DWI, a fair to yield, but it's more than that. It's drugs, misdemeanor drugs, it's marijuana, it's drug paraphernalia, it's domestic assaults. It is the epidemic of stealing and shoplifting in this city. I mean, we're a big retail area. We're a mecca for shoppers, but we're also a mecca for thieves. So when I look at that spreadsheet every morning, and I see that we've put eight new people in there, and I've already got eight people, and I do the math, what do I do? You know, I can look at that spreadsheet and say, none of these people need to be let out. You know, I may have two or three that are domestic assault. I let them out, and they're going to go back and do what caused them to be in jail the first time. I let someone out that's in for stealing or shoplifting. The officers don't put someone in for a shoplifting that they've never dealt with before. They put them in because it's the second or third or the fourth time. Those people are in there because it's a cost of doing business to them. So it is a constant juggling process, but the people I let out, I'm uncomfortable, 50% of the people I let out, I'm uncomfortable doing it. They figured it out. They know that I won't leave them in there indefinitely. They know that if they wait me out, when they could get out on bond or $200 or $300, if they wait me out seven or eight days, I'm going to let them out. Because what we end up doing is costing this city more to keep them in than what their fine is going to generate. Now, municipal court is not about money. Ferguson, Missouri is any indication of that, and what's going to sweep Missouri in the legislature next year. It's not about money. But if we're going to issue the tickets, if we're going to find people guilty, or they enter a guilty plea, then the integrity of the court demands that we enforce what our judgments are. If people don't show up, if people don't pay, then we have to enforce that. No one ever goes to jail in municipal court because they can't afford to pay. Probably two-thirds of all the people I deal with there are getting some sort of government assistance. If they can't pay, they come to court, we offer them community service. Or many municipal courts don't have any installment plans, but we do. I mean, we're taking small amounts of money to help these people out. Now, what you could say is they can't afford to pay, just wipe them off the books. Well, you can, and at some point, this city might decide if they want to do that. But if I make an order, then I have a responsibility to enforce that order. But what we often do, we, we offer them community service if they can't pay, and we've given them a number of times, and they come in and say, hey, don't you think it's time to do some community service? Right now, we have owed to the city of Papa Bluff, and Mr. Kaplan and I have been talking about that, how city departments can benefit from the community service. There's approximately 3,000 hours of community service available to this city. What is that, a little over 70 weeks? That's a lot of work that can be done. It's not always reliable work, and Mr. Kaplan will have to work for the departments where they may need four people that day and two show up. It's not a very reliable workforce. So, having said that, that's where that big amount of money comes in. But let me tell you, we put all of what we project the cost in this budget. In the prior couple of year budgets, not all of the inmate expenses has actually gone into the budget. We have divided it. We are one of the very few municipal courts in the state of Missouri that collects money for what's known as the Crime Reduction Fund. A crime reduction fund is a fee that the prosecutor negotiates when he deals with an attorney for a defendant or for a defendant directly, and he is recommending probation. Probation, technically, there is no fee, but in lieu of that, or there's no fine, but in lieu of that fine, the prosecutor will say, you're going to pay court costs, you're going to be on probation for a year, you're going to go to this drug court or this stealing class, but we've waived a $300 fine, but we're going to require you to make a payment into the Crime Reduction Fund. The reason we were allowed to do that is a number of years ago, about 10 or 11 years ago, our city was the only city in the state of Missouri that passed an ordinance that allowed us to do that. There was a state statute that allowed state courts to collect Crime Reduction Fund monies, but the state statute never allowed a municipal court to do that. Your representative at that time, Mark Richardson, his brother was municipal judge. Doesn't take much to figure out, those two guys could figure out how it needed to work for our municipal courts. They passed the law, Jeff City, we passed the ordinance, we are allowed to collect monies for the Crime Reduction Fund. We collect approximately $50,000 a year in the Crime Reduction Fund. That goes in a fund that I have no control over. Mr. Kaplan, I believe the chief, Mr. Massingham, if I'm wrong, you guys correct me on who's on that crime, and maybe somebody else. See, I don't even know who's on there. And they use that money. In the past, it's bought police cars. The last couple of years, because our jail bills got high, the prior city manager, Mr. Bagby, and I discussed that he wanted it split out, some in the budget, some in the crime reduction. We put it in so this year, so you would get a good idea, Mr. Kaplan wanted to do it, what your jail is actually costing you. It's been costing you about $40,000 the last couple of years, but you only saw like $25,000 or $26,000. Now, it came out of a fund, or it comes out of the general fund. Now, it came out of a fund, or it comes out of the general fund, but if it comes out of a Crime Reduction Fund, that's one less cop car you're going to buy. So, let's just put it out there and let you know where it is. Now, you also do have an increase here in line 7130, $40,000. Prior to this year, your city prosecutor was in a different budget, wasn't in municipal court budget. That's when Mr. Pierce and Mr. Duncan, Mr. Duncan was city attorney, Mr. Pierce was city prosecutor. I don't know where those budget items were, but they weren't in municipal court. So, that $40,000 includes your newly appointed municipal prosecutor. That $40,000 also includes a bailiff. We had a bailiff starting about five or six years ago, and I visited with the chief of it, and you guys can cut me off at any time, but when you get me up here, I can just probably talk to you.
I think the public appreciates what you're saying. This is good information, thank you.
Okay. About four or five years ago, the chief and I were talking, we would, you need bailiffs. It's the same kind of people here, you're dealing with over there, so the security required that we have a bailiff. We were taking officers off of the street. It wasn't efficient. Some days, they were very short of officers, could be leave or some sick, and we were taking an officer off the road when he needed to be on the road. So, we approached the prior city manager, he gave us a budget, and that really hasn't increased other than the normal 2% or 3% that sometimes they increase. It's about $16,000. I think I'm going to be able to save a little bit on that. When we first created the bailiff, we created a bailiff/warrant officer, and we had hoped that we would assist the police department either further by having this bailiff/warrant officer to go out and serve warrants. Well, we have found that a part-time bailiff, it's hard for him to serve warrants. It's better when the officer is going down the road and he sees Mr. Smith, and he knows there's a warrant. But, if you've got a guy that can only spend eight hours a week trying to chase people down, he's not going to find them. So, I think that the police department is going to help us on that, the municipal court staff, because they do have some extra time now with the extra hours that they're working that bumped them from 35 to 40. We have taken on additional duties. We are going to attempt to lower that jail bill we talked about, and by not serving as many warrants. Now, it seems a little strange, but we are calling people and reminding them that they didn't come to court. And we're doing that before we issue the warrant. Before I leave that court after every court session, I will review the people that didn't appear. I will make a note which people, which defendants I want warrants to issue. We put that in a whole status, and the warrants are usually not issued for three or four days. In that period of time, your municipal court clerks are making calls. They are calling people, and every time they show up, we get a data sheet of their last address, their last phone numbers. They're not always honest with us about those phone numbers, but we are calling. And, the first month we did it, it generated between $2,000 and $3,000. It generates the money, but it saves on the warrant. So, if you look at the net on that, we may be, there could be a net benefit of $3,000 or $4,000, and we're going to continue to do that. The other thing is, the municipal clerks have additional duties now. We're assisting our private probation who supervises our community service for that us. They are the same people who supervise the state community service, and Judge Pritchett, who is the presiding judge, and technically, who is my boss. You all appoint me, but we are division of the 36th Judicial Circuit. He has asked me to keep our private probation in the mix. We've been approached within the last three or four months by private probation, and they're telling us, "Your court is a losing proposition for us." I told them that we would take on some of the duties, and the clerks were very good about that in assisting them. Anybody that's assigned community service used to would go and log their hours with the private probation office and officers. They now come to our court every Monday morning, they present to us a card, and we're doing the record keeping and the bookkeeping for private probation. Our clerks will call the private probation venue to see if they did that, to verify the hours and keep the logs. So, some of the things that look like we're going to increase on expenses, I believe with that extra five hours that we've got, that we're going to be able to save some of that and contain some of that. But, other than the jail, the $50,000, which unless we can figure something out, maybe 70 next year, other than the prosecutors in my budget, I think you're going to see that they're pretty normal. One thing that Mr. Kaplan and I have talked about, and I was supposed to have already had him these figures, but I have not been able to find it, is the possibility of using GPS units for people that we release. And let me tell you why I think that's a good idea, anyway. These people need to work, and if we could get them back out. The dilemma that I have, and I haven't sat down with Mr. Kaplan, I can't find a company that will allow us to rotate defendants for less than 30 days. I don't want to keep anybody on a GPS unit for 30 days. I would like to keep them on for 10 or 15 days to get their attention and show them that they do need to be accountable to the court. So, I'm onwinded. Any questions?
You mentioned 101-513-7130 prosecuting.
Yes, that $40,000 figure.
Okay, what is the 101-513-8260? About the bottom, third line, take the line from the bottom.
8260. That, the $20,610?
Well, then, the 55, 50, 60, 50, 60, 50.
Okay, let's go back to what we talked about. Until this year, you were seeing a fee of about $20,000 for inmate expense.
So, that's what that is.
The other half of that was coming out.
I wanted to verify what that was, okay.
Yeah, that's what that was. And this, last year, or this year, it's going to be about $47,000, the year before, about $43,000. But, I put in 50. I am struggling to keep it at 6. I don't want to keep anyone in jail that we don't have to. But, I'm telling you, if we had a jail to hold people accountable, it wouldn't be 6.
Yes, sir.
It would be significantly more.
Okay.
We issue approximately 300 warrants a month for people that fail to come in. Compliance with the orders of the court don't occur, and, well, let me, I don't know how to actually put this in words. 70% of the people that do what they're supposed to do in municipal court only do it, 70% only do it after a warrant's been issued. Now, that is an amazing figure.
And so, the remote inmate monitoring that we're working on is in lieu of incarceration. Now, obviously, if we have a violent offender or a real high-level crime, that's, those people would not qualify. But, in this case, for us to mitigate the cost, it's growing exponentially. Again, like the Crime Reduction Fund, it's $50,000 a year in revenue. You devote 100% of that revenue over to this inmate incarceration issue we have, you're going to see by next year, probably, we're going to be negative. Because you can see if it grows to $70,000 when we're only collecting 50, simple math. And so, we're looking at alternatives to see how we can monitor inmates, held them accountable as we talked about, and lower our costs.
Mayor Proteam, while I've not gotten any bids, I've had a little experience with the GPS units through my part-time position with juvenile officers, too. But, you're looking at approximately $10 a day on a GPS, as opposed to what's probably going to be $30 a day. But, again, I can't find a company off of the net that lets us put them on and take them off every 10 days or so. Some of them might be longer than that, but some of them, you get their attention. The reason I think that 10 days is a realistic figure is, right now, I'll leave someone in for seven or eight days, we'll let them out, but they are immediately required, as a part of their recognizance bond, to report to the municipal court every day between 8:00 AM and 10:00 AM, every day. And I usually release them if they do that for 10 days. Unfortunately, 50% of them, they'll do it one or two days, and then they don't do it anymore. So, any other questions?
I have a question on 7130. You mentioned that the prosecuting attorney was on a prior budget. Mr. Kaplan, do you know which budget they were included in?
Yeah, I believe I do. Let me look it up real quick, I believe. See if they, Department 1, 2. You know, so we got Department 12 is what I'm looking, I'm looking under the city attorney. I'm not sure if it was listed there or not. Mark, do you remember, was it under Department 12 or not?
No, sir, it's under Department 60. If you look at Section 16. 1, 2, 3.
Does this reflect the difference?
Yes. If you look from the sixth, from the bottom up, it says contracted services. This year, it was budgeted 80, and next year's budgeted 56, 579.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure that we were reflecting the change.
Let's add non-departmental. 0060.
I'm pretty tight. My wife says that I'm worse than tight. I was concerned about how this budget was going to look because of things that were in it that weren't before. I believe that Mr. Kaplan looks back at the municipal court budget, that we frequently don't spend our whole budget. But, you know, that's only $2,000 or $3,000 savings, but this inmate thing is eating us up, and I just don't know a good solution for it.
I appreciate you informing the council and the public on this. I think it's pretty important to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question number two.
So, the other question I had is on the street department. Again, on that amount, which is in excess of $700,000. And then, you know, along with that, on the health insurance on that budget item, which is 71,700, being at 307,160. And I thought, you know, I didn't know why that would be up, we're trying to, we're anticipating one down, so.
Well, let me quickly explain the health insurance piece. And so, without getting into too much of the logistics, I can get into as much detail as you'd like, but in regards to the health insurance, again, we're in the hole in regards to our internal service fund, which you can, you know, you'll see in your budget documents. But, two, our rates that we have secured are less than our renewal rates. That's the good news. The bad news is, we got to start paying ourselves back over time, and it's not going to come all at once. And when I negotiated how this would, how this would, you know, roll out to the employees through the committee that was appointed to review the initial Aon proposal that was recommended, using that same committee moving forward to kind of bounce ideas off of the employees in general. And so, 10% was what was palatable to the staff. Now, the good news, and there's good news and bad news, the good news is, we're going to get employees to participate, and the cost of the insurance that we're going to be recommending, plus 10% to start paying ourselves back. On the bad side of that is, we pay 100% of the employee. We pay 2/3 for employee and spouse, we pay 2/3 to cost for employee plus children, and 2/3 for family. And so, when you work out the percentage overall aggregate, the city picks up 85% of the overall cost of insuring roughly, right now, about 277 employees, but that includes the employees, I believe, from the cable that are no longer with us, so it's more like probably what, Mark, 250-ish, 240-ish? Actually, last year was 286, and this year it's dropped to 277, so. Well, so, the 277 include cable people?
That's with cable people gone.
So, they're gone, so, okay, so 277, then we have, again, 85% of those employees, we pay the premiums of, so when we increase by 10%, we're increasing our own cost, but we're doing that to pay ourselves back, to put money back in the reserve. But, on the 15% side, they're going to have to pay more as well. Moving forward, and this is only going to be, the only way you can make progress on this front is when you start opening, reopening the collective bargaining agreements that the city has, which we have one opening, what's his, IBW contract that's opening up this summer of '15, where we have to start this discussion of, one, either two fronts. One is regarding the generosity of the city, like I said, paying 85% of all costs, which I don't believe is sustainable. Or, two, we have to start lowering the benefit level we offer. You'll see for, that this coming proposal we're giving to the employees tomorrow through the mandatory meeting, is we're going to give them a choice of three. One, if they want to continue with a PPO, is a 90-10 plan, they're going to have to pay 10% more, unless you're the employee. We still pick up 100% of that. But, if they don't want to take on that increase, they have two other options at a lower cost. We have an 85-15 plan, and then we have an HSA Health Savings Account Plan that's going to be offered to them as well, where it's substantially, I think it's about 84% of the overall cost of the PPO 90-10 plan is what they'll save. So, and where, of course, the 85-15 plan, it's 95% of the cost. And so, they are offered lower-cost options. The other thing that's going to help bring down our costs as well is, we have not offered buyouts for employees that are eligible to jump on plans of their spouses, and we're going to offer that this year. And so, we're trying to deploy a lot of different tools to try to bring down that cost as aggressively as we can, so where instead of that number keep creeping up each year, we can get it down to a manageable level that we can, which we can balance, too. Because we have to not only balance the budget, we have to balance, you know, obviously, our internal service fund moving forward. Yes, sir?
On the police department, 2015, $5,551,000, and the previous year, $4,647,000. So, is much of that the IT expansion we're doing, or is it not in the budget, or where is that coming from, that increase?
Well, some of it does. So, I think it's better to work through it line by line. And so, where you're going to see the most, like, one of the first items you'll see that I recall is the telecommunications, or the telephone expense, which is 101-531-82410. You see, it goes from 2,500 to 52,560. So, that's the addition of 27, if I remember right, MDT units and the air card and the service to provide internet service to those MDTs, that's why that's going up. The other thing that's been a frustration point, is we just heard from the judge, training funds. The Crime Reduction Fund used to be a viable source for the police department to use for training purposes, and since that's quickly depleting, where it's becoming really not no longer available to the police department, you're seeing, you know, those training fees pushed onto the budget. It's putting pressure on the general fund. And so, the last thing we want is, obviously, we don't want untrained officers on the street. We have to maintain their credentials, we have to make sure they're, you know, obviously a part of that is firearm training, et cetera. Now, professional services, which is on that 101-531-8260, so you have a certified trainer that comes in. We have on staff, how many of our current officers are certified training officers as well? Captain McLean.
Certified training officers for firearms. Let's see. Myself, Donnie Trout, Sergeant Joe Ward, Detective Bryce Colvin, and I believe I'm missing someone, K-9 Officer Akers. I believe there's five of us, told.
And if you wouldn't mind, walk us through what professionals you need to bring in for training purposes, when you, or when do we need to send officers to classes? Walk us through all the training and needs of the rank. Walk us through all the training and needs of, of the rank and file.
Sure. By law, police officers who have a license through Missouri Police Officer Standardized Training or post are required to get forty-eight hours of continuing education units every three years. With that said, there's certain areas of expertise that we have to continuously train on with the police department. Snipers, drug recognition experts, type-two permit holders for the breath, BA machines, so on and so forth, field training officers, that's, that's required. Radar, Doppler radar instructors. Again, firearms instructors. I teach tactical rifle, that's another one, shotgun, pistol. School resource officers require specialized training and the list continues.
Give them a summary of the capital improvement requests that are being made as well, please.
The capital improvement request, the twenty-seven mobile computer terminals, the thirty-nine body worn cameras and new department issued firearms. In addition to that, there's some requests in there for general capital expenditures such as vehicles, replacement of tasers. And I believe that we had, I think I requested four additional radios in there as well, which the price of those have skyrocketed. It is just unbelievable at the price of those.
And again, Mayor Brodmann, is this, you know, we're not gonna be able to fund at all of this. I wanted to see, I wanted you to see the full gamut of what's gonna be eventually rolled out in that capital improvement plan over a sequence of many fiscal years.
Yes.
But I just wanted to kind of go give you a snapshot of the operational increases and why in, in the capital piece.
Okay.
You mentioned the K nine. K nine has gone up five thousand dollars a year. The one that's going up another five thousand this year.
It has. And Mr. Kaplan and I had that discussion. He noticed that right off the bat. The department has, three years ago, we had one K nine. Now we have three. We, we have a, we have a K nine that the department purchased through donations. That was the one that we had three years ago. Then we had a second one, the, an officer basically purchased the animal. We paid for the training and upkeep. And then the third is our bomb dog. It's assigned to Sergeant Darren Moore with the bomb team, bomb detection dog. And that was donated to the department. So the increase you see there is the, the much-needed funds for the vet bills, the maintenance and care for the animal, transport devices and so on in the vehicle.
I have one question. On the gasoline, did we purchase that from stations? Do we got, do we have a fueling area for them?
We, we started, I believe, two years ago with fuel car last year, Mrs. Kirby, with the state fuel cars. Was that last year or this year?
State company, last year.
Last year. I believe there's only one station in town that does not take it and that's Harps. I went out there the day they opened and it didn't work. And I went in and then there, it's company, they just do not do business with any fleet cart. So the officer has the choice of where he or she fills up. And we definitely encourage to shop cheapest.
Does that save us money or do we have our own fuel system?
You know, I do not, I do not have the statistical data to give you that answer. I know that we, I've been here just shy of twenty years, a few months shy. And we filled at Moran and Cedar for just a couple of three years and then that went away somewhere around ninety-seven or eight. So I wouldn't be able to get that information for you without some digging, but I'd be more than happy to do.
I was just wondering.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can get those costs for you. From, you're talking to the streets department, what they utilize for all vehicles. Yeah, we can get that information for you. But also on the fleet cart, we do, you know, the program we participate in does give us discounts as well. So we don't pay the actual rate that you see that's on the sign as well.
Certain percentage tax back on it.
Right. And so we'll show you those costs in comparison to also, obviously, how we maintain it for our street fleet as well.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions on police? Where are we getting, where are you jumping to another department now? Okay, so I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
I was looking at cemetery department. It's jumped, it's jumped eighty thousand bucks, looks like, from fourteen fifty.
And so, Department fifty-one, I'll have to get back with you on that. I don't think, I don't see Jeremy in the audience, so I'll, I'll jot that one down and get back with you on the increase.
You have seventy-three thousand capital improvements. Is that about right?
That one I do know. For the cemetery, is, is everyone been to our cemetery office? You can barely get one person, maybe two, in that office. We want to expand that to it's, where it's a little bigger. We want to add, I think, a ten by ten addition to that little office, I guess you wanna call it, as you're coming into the cemetery drive. So the billion improvements you're seeing that's listed is for that. And also, I believe they need eventually, not now, but as soon as we can, a new backhoe eventually. But I had another piece I'll give.
Backhoe?
Backhoe.
The street department does that now?
Yep. Yep, now I'll get back to you on your question though.
A few different council members have expressed concerns about the utilities budget. Did anyone wanna comment on that?
I had a discussion with Mr. Bach today after the, I attended the board meeting today. And I don't, I was concerned about a large capital expense of about two million dollars. He's famous, right now it's the wish list. And I think they're gonna work at paring that down. I don't wanna put words in your mouth, Mr. Kaplan, but this is, this is something that we're gonna work on over a period and not just a year, over a two or three-year period.
Yeah, at least five fiscal years.
Okay.
Yep. And to reiterate, Councilman Branham indicated, and Councilman Tinsley was there and also Councilman Johnson and DeGeras, is we had a very good discussion my first meeting in front of the utility advisory committee. I think it was a very productive meeting. I think we're working towards a resolution to make sure we're stabilizing utility operationally and also stabilizing on a capital improvement standpoint, knowing that, obviously, there's sensitivities to, to, to considering increased costs and, obviously, the necessary revenues that would have to be paired with it. And so we're starting to begin that dialogue, which will evolve over a period of months. And so I'll keep the council apprised on it as those discussions progress. But there will be an item for council consideration on December the first that was related to this discussion and moving forward with a recommendation that I'll explain further on December the first.
The dialogue was very receptive both ways, for those who didn't attend. Both sides have ideas, I thought, from what, from my perspective. And I think both sides are willing to try to figure out a way to move forward without a huge rate increase. And they're, and they're bouncing some ideas around.
It was a good meeting.
It was.
Very productive. I was very pleased with it.
Good.
Any other questions or concerns that we can help answer while we have everyone here? No, if not, it's okay. Like I said, we still got the remainder of the week to where you can stop by, make an appointment or, or just give me a call. You guys hopefully have my number by now, in case you don't. The number is, no kidding. But I'll email it to you, so. But just, I'm serious. Any question, anytime, please call me or come by. So we can get this finalized and hopefully, like I said, our goal is to get it wrapped up with, with the budget no longer moving by this Friday. And I'll have next week to get everything rolled back up, so we can see what the final document will look like.
Yeah. I certainly think that there is a collective room for paring down some of the requests to make it a little bit better. I just hope that all the department heads will go back and try to, try to do some of that. Judge Millian, I think he is in severe need for what, what he's requested. So I think that, in my opinion, that, that budget is.
Well, without getting too much on my soapbox, Mayor, the, the issue, if I had to describe the city to any Joe citizen that was asking how the city operates, it's really not much different from a lot of cities I've been with prior. But the part that I wanna make sure, I provide full disclosure to anyone who asks me, is the, and I mentioned this in the utility advisory committee meeting, is the city is subsidizing on multiple different fronts. And so, we subsidize on the governmental side. So basically, all the losses of the Coliseum that I've been hooting and howling and I'm not doing that to, to criticize the management of that facility or the, or the employees that work hard every day. It's just, it's a, it's a difficult situation there. And I think you've got employees that are trying really, really hard. But that's a hard piece to manage. It just is. And so I, we gotta come up with solutions, but, but the government subsidizes that loss annually. Okay? So you have that subsidizing piece. It's enterprise activity, but however, the governmental funds, we, we issue a transfer at the end of the year to offset whatever's negative. Okay? Utility side, they subsidize. And it's okay. I mean, I say subsidize is a bad word, but there is a balance to how much you can subsidize based, and what you're willing to subsidize based on the price of government and the services you wanna offer. And so, on the utility side, we're not capturing in the full amount of what the operation costs. But with that, something that I would tell any citizen is we internally are adding to that 'cause we internally subsidize. So as I'm sure you've heard over and over, the city does not pay for electric. We don't pay for water. We don't pay for sewer. I'm not used to seeing that. In Muskegon County, we pay our portions. And the reason for that, because we don't wanna subsidize the actual O and M cost. And so, or the capital costs or so on. And so, so we're subsidizing both sides, governmental and enterprise activities alike. And then internally, there's internal indirect costs, expenses that are eligible to be retained that we just don't capture. And from its first look from Maximus, that's got the first number from Maximus, we have eligible up to five million dollars worth of indirect expenses that we are subsidizing internally. So what's negative five million? What's negative one point five million for the Coliseum? What's negative one million for electric utility? It just adds up. It adds up to a really ugly figure. And now, we don't want the city to have too much cash because that tells me that we are overcharging for our services. So there's a balance. But we're in, we're heading in the wrong direction with depleting the cash reserves to the point where we're gonna compromise eventually services we offer. And if we don't, we don't need tax increases. I don't advocate for that. I don't think we need that whatsoever. Now, I know we gotta, we talked, like, we talked one minute, we're gonna have to possibly have some work on the utility side. But internally, we gotta stop subsidizing a hundred percent. Now, it doesn't have to be, you know, we don't have to pay a hundred percent of everything, but at least let's start incrementally, start paying for those costs that we're now subsidizing. Because what, 'cause what you're seeing, what we're masking to our public is the true cost of what, what it takes to provide government services. And so when people are like, well, you've been doing fine all these years. 'Cause they don't see it. They don't see the depleting cash. They don't see the losses. Not, not to everyday person, some people see it, but not everyday people see that. And so they don't understand that, okay, one day you had X amount of people in one department and then the next day, if we keep losing money the way we are, we're gonna be making. So if we don't get increases in one way, shape or form from revenue overall, you're talking, okay, where do we cut? And I've been in those, those days. I mean, and, I mean, I don't like getting out of hatchet either. But if it really comes down to it, that's the ugliness that we all face, that we have to balance a budget. We have to be fiscally responsible with the dollars where appropriate and given. And I think the city has done that almost to a fault in some ways. Is we've done it to where we're subsidizing that cost. So when we actually unveil what the true cost is, then it starts getting scary. And it is. It's, but it's something we gotta talk about. And so, not to get too much on my soapbox about it, but I'm just saying that something does have to give. If we don't get any new, let's say, we just say no to utility rate increases. Okay, I get it. Fine, and I'm fine with that decision. And, but, I'm just telling you that if that decision takes hold, then I'll tell you how many years it'll take you to deplete all of your cash. And you're heading in that direction right now. And so, like, right now from the cable sale, now, those funds that we've barely spent any dollars except for the Z Coram settlement, we're quickly depleting that money right now. And it's not because I am doing it, it's not 'cause it's been authorized. It's just when you have negative balances, like your health insurance fund, the Coliseum, those things, the money gets eaten up because we can't go negative. Is we have to reserve and restrict dollars to offset that negative balance. And we're already doing that against the balance that we have for the cable sale. And I wanna, I wanna save as much of those dollars as possible because I think some of those dollars need to go to the utilities. I think some of those dollars need to go elsewhere where they're needed to help balance the approach. So we have one, we have, we have strong, sustainable governmental service, strong, sustainable enterprise services. And I think that can be done, but at first I wanna protect that cash. And the only way to protect it is stop depleting it. So, sorry, Mayor.
We also talked about today, though, in the meeting, with the growth of the city, with the hospital, with Menards, with, with, we've put a lot of money into Eight Point and improving the infrastructure. And over the next three years, especially with Mansion Mall and Valley Plaza, we're going to see an increase in volume.
We're hoping.
We've had, Norno is moving, but hopefully somebody will take their place. Hopefully, we will see the, I, I'd just like to see, I believe that there are corners we can cut and become more efficient. And.
I don't disagree with that. And we're, and efficiencies can be gained reasonably, we will gain them. I promise you there. But I can tell you that there's only so much, quote-unquote, sigma sex, lean sex tactics that you can deploy here. I, I went through it all in, you know, in Muskegon County and elsewhere. And I can tell you that, again, there's only so much you can, you can cut. You only can get to one point, like we talked about in Muskegon County, is we weren't into the bone. We were in the bone marrow in, in Muskegon. And here, you're beyond the bone marrow. You're into, you're into the cellular level here. You're, you're, we're depleting from within.
When do, when do you anticipate we can have our planning session for the Coliseum?
I would like to have it ASAP. I think it's something we, we need to have a special meeting ahead of, there's two, you know, there's actually more than two. There's three major topics that we need to approach before the December first public hearing. That's one of which. And so I'd like to, that'd be the next thing I'd like to talk with the council about is reserving some dates. And sometimes, and possibly even weekends, where we can have a workshop to discuss these items with the department heads and let's, let's put pen to paper and be as efficient as we can. But it's, but a bottom line, what it's gonna come down to, if you go to a zero-based budgeting approach, you're gonna find that there's gonna be a line driven and you'll see everything below that line will have to be. You know, I, I'm trying to avoid that. 'Cause I, again, I, I don't wanna be brought here to weaken the services that are being delivered right now. I wanna be, I wanna strengthen them. Because right now, it's, it's not sustainable.
I guess the other factor we talked about, replacing all the meters. Mr. Bach, in the research he's done, every, every place has done, has raised resources.
Yeah. Well, and the other thing that.
I don't think it's gonna be more efficient.
Right. And the other thing I wanna, I wanna touch on, and I'm glad you brought that up, Councilman Tinsley, the half-cent sales tax that we collect for capital improvement reasons. I'm hearing a lot, a criticism, you know, from internally from employees and then abroad is to, well, if you're spending those dollars, why can't you, you know, use those dollars for operation? Well, we can't. You can't use that money for it. It's only used for capital improvement purposes only. We have an ordinance to, to how we can use it. And so, so we, but the good news is we have a funding vehicle for those capital improvement items like the meters that need to be funded. Instead of us increasing utility rates based on meters, now we're, we're taking care of those meters through this funding mechanism, which I would think should, should've been done a while ago. But with that, you know, we're paving streets that need to be paved. But with that, you know, we're paving streets that need to be paved, you know, we're also taking care of IT needs that have been put on the shelf for too long, but we're moving forward. But I just want people to understand that the monies that are collected, we collect approximately about $2 million annually off that half cent, not one penny of that, not one penny, can go towards supporting the operational gap we're talking about here today. I wish I could, but I just can't.
Yeah, I think that's important for our citizens to know, because it can't be used for operational needs.
No, if I, you know, again, if I could wave a magic wand, I would change that, but I can't. And so, since we discussed it, we've got to stay within the rules.
It's our job to make sure that we spend those dollars where we can and not use our operational money to do things that we could spend that half cent on.
Correct, there's a balance, right. You have to push everything that you can, but you just want, you don't want to take on a capital improvement unnecessarily, but these are well-needed, and you're seeing, that's why this number's so high, because these departments for years have not had the capital needs that they've needed to run the department.
Madam Mayor, I was at the utility board today, and Mr. Tucker Davis, he's chairman, and he said something that was absolutely true. My first term on the council, I looked at it as what a normal person would do, you're thinking of retirement down the road, save money, save money, save money. You can't, Mr. Lawson, he was city manager, he sat me down, and we talked about it, it's a balancing scale. We need to be, we need enough money in case of an emergency, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kaplan, but we, if we have enough for an emergency, we need to be prepared to invest the other dollars into the city through capital improvements and through operation maintenance. And in doing so, Mr. Davis today, you know, a prime example was the Coliseum, it hasn't made money, but it brings money, it generates money.
Is it?
We have a, if we lose on an event, I'll just use the rodeo, that was the event, I think, that came up in the beta conference, if we're not breaking even every time on an event, we are filling up hotels, restaurants, we're generating revenue that turned over, as the old saying goes, eight times before it leaves town, you know? That's never going to be a break-even profit-making facility, wished it was, I was told. I got on the council the first month, it wasn't. I do agree that we need to be sustainable to the point of, that we need to figure out a way to reduce our actual outflow of cash, but there are just so many things in the city that, as we go, I guess another one would be, because we were there for electric today, we need to bring the electric. We're, earthquake, floods, tornadoes, we do need that operating capital, available, a certain amount available. If we do have an emergency, but we don't want our race to be so high that we're building, when I was, like I say, 1999, my first term, naive, I'm sitting here thinking, we just keep building that money up because we have it, that's not the way government operates. There's no, there's no good reasoning to have. At that time, we had $18 million in the utility fund and was drawing interest, but we were actually subsidizing our utility rates with the interest rates then, where we should have been raising our rates a little at a time. What happened? We invested in some infrastructure, instead of getting 8%, 6% to 8% on our money, now we're getting 1/2%, 3/4%. And it has, it's caught up with not Popper Bluff, only Popper Bluff, but this, the local, federal, state, all levels of government, you know? And like I say, it's, I don't know any other way of putting it, it's a balancing act to, for this council to provide the services and still provide enough money if we have what I call a rainy day.
Yep, and if I may, Madam Mayor, a little further is, and so, the other thing that's been talked about as well is, okay, you know, the election and the effect that has obviously on, and obviously, you all as elected officials, and of course, to also indirectly, us, the department heads and the employees at the city, is all we have, you know, as we've seen in writings before, that bell of fear is being rung here. We can't back away from fear, we can't back away from a challenge, and that's what this is, because the second we do, let's say, you know, we do the right thing, and okay, everyone on this board we see here is replaced with someone else, and they're going to say, "Well, we're going to do X, Y, Z." The laws of, the laws of cash apply here, just no differently than anyone else. The laws of physics don't break down here, this isn't a black hole, this isn't the point of singularity in the universe where physics breaks down and no longer exists, is math works, is, you know, 1 plus 1 equals 2 here, 1 minus 1 equals 0 here. So, it's just, it comes down to the simple math, is we do not have enough pluses to take care of the minuses. And so, you know, it's either this council, or someone's going to deal with the issue. And if it gets punted to the point where someone else doesn't deal with it, well, guess what? It's called Chapter 9 bankruptcy. That's, the chapter is reserved for municipalities that go bankrupt. And so, then what, then what will the paper write at that point? It's how you didn't take action, I guarantee it. There's one that says, "Well, when you do, we're going to, we're going to eviscerate you for doing the right thing." On the other side is, when you don't, you get eviscerated because it went bankrupt. And so, what I'm saying is, we got to run an operation, not based on fear, based on facts. Let's use the other F-word, facts.
Jim Christman, 464 North Main. There's one category, I want to thank you all for taking this matter very seriously, and I think it is a serious matter that needs to be considered, but there's one thing that I have noticed on here, and it's L-A-G-E-R-S pension.
Loggers.
I'm not sure where that falls, but I've looked at a couple of categories, and in some cases, the pension fund that is being paid in is almost three times what's being paid in for social security. How much pension do our city employees get from the city after they retire? I mean, what do they, does their retirement, plus their social security equal more than what their salary was when they were working? I, you know, I'd be curious as to what that is. The other thing I didn't see in the budget, and I'm just, it may be there, I may have just missed it, is city hall funding, is there anything, any contingency in there for that? Thank you.
Welcome. So, let's talk about loggers, without getting into too much boring and nauseating detail here. So, you have a state pension fund program, actually, it's quite a robust one, actually. You know, in Michigan, we had MERS, you have loggers here. And so, loggers, you know, this community decided to participate in loggers, it is a pension benefit that's payable to all employees that vest over a five-year period, and it's 100% paid for by the city, 100%. That is an extraordinary benefit. It's not that it's not deserved by the employees that work these jobs, but that is a, in the state of Michigan, you don't have that deal, is you have to pay a percentage, and then the employer picks up the rest. Now, this employer usually pays more than the employee, of course, but here, this is 100%. And guess what? Once you participate in the plan, they force you, to all full-time employees, have to participate after six months, that includes yours truly that did not want to participate. I tried to fight it, and it just, I, because me, I would rather have a lesser benefit of 401K than have the pension benefit, that's just my philosophy, it's the way I am, but there was, we had no choice, so we had to participate. And so, the way that pension benefit is calculated is based on an actual benefit modifier, and I don't know the percentage on top of me, you know, Mark, do you know the exact percentage? Can you walk them through that multiplier, please?
They take your five years' final average salary, times your years of service, times 2%.
So, your FAC five years and at 2% modifier, so it'll take your five highest-paid years to calculate your FAC, and then you got your 2% benefit modifier to where, how they'll calculate your benefit that is paid. Now, again, your vesting period's five years, now, Mark, the incremental, is it 100% vesting within five years, so meaning, okay, someone who works five years are 100% vested only for that five-year period, and then how's it work when someone goes to 10 years, to 15, to 20, et cetera?
Normally, what happens at five years, you're vested, if you leave before 10 years, loggers will pay you out a lump sum and wipe you off the books. If you're here after that, if you retire after 10 years of service, then they hold that money and this formula takes place.
Okay, thank you. So, the 10 years is the magic mark. So, did I help answer your question, Mr. Christman, on the loggers piece? And then, your second question regards in the city hall is, right now, there is only an estimate only, but right now, the, we have a committee that's looking over proposals for a consultant, for a feasibility study, and that number's going to evolve, but the placeholder we have in the budget right now is based on what the city of Sikeston costs were to build their public safety building in the city of Sikeston, which was right around $130 per square foot build-out, and that did not include property acquisition, you know, foundational treatments, FFNE, furniture fixtures and equipment, and any other ancillary cost. And so, if you use roughly that budgetary figure, $130, this was in my newsletter as well, you times it by the 35,000 square feet, which is approximately what we need or less, you're right around 4.5 million, but that's just for the building or buildings, it doesn't include any property acquisition, foundational work, or FFNE. So, you're looking at, my guess, no more than $6 million is my guess. And so, the dollars that's going to be earmarked for that is going to be that half-cent sales tax money, that 910 fund that we just talked about prior. In four years, you'll have your Coliseum paid off, and so, then you're going to see incrementally, your accrual balance really start aggressively building, that's the dollars that we're going to earmark to pay for the city hall, municipal court, police station. So, right now, it's just a placeholder until we get it refined over the next several months when we talk to a consultant.
We're still on item D of the workshop, did anyone want to move, move this to the workshop?
I'd like to ask one question.
Go ahead.
Deals with the Coliseum, we have down here part-time salary and temporary salary. Part-time looks reduced, temporary salary is $100,000, seems like an awful lot for temporary salary.
It is, I talked with Bobby about it, and really, in, when you have these special events and you want to provide flexible staff without paying benefits, it actually is cheaper than actually hiring the staff and holding them on the books with benefits that are going to be eligible, especially with the Affordable Care Act provisions that are going to be possibly going to affect next year, which exponentially more expensive, so this was a cheaper cost alternative. But like I said, I'm going to be working with Bobby tomorrow, and we're going to put together a budget which I think we can sustain moving forward. Now, the one thing I'd like to remind the public of, and this includes the paper, please put this in the paper, is when I look at the Coliseum, I look at two different operations. I see the Coliseum where the event center is, and then I see the Coliseum, which is the fitness and pool area. Fitness and pool area, I'm not looking to change that operation at all, that'll be still accessible to the public, to the way, no differently that it is now. And what I'm talking about changing is the event, the biggest piece, the stadium, as I guess don't know other way of putting another in the stadium. That's the piece that we're going to be talking about in a workshop here in the near future of how we best move that operation forward to where we're not sustaining such a loss. We're going to have some loss, but how can we mitigate it to a point where we can balance our dollars to? So, thank you for bringing up that point.
Thank you.
So, you need a motion to move this to the next workshop session?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second to move item D to the workshop session held on December 1st, 2015. All in favor?
Aye.
Wait, it says 2015, it's 2014, sorry about that.
Typhoon.
Yeah, typhoon. opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the action required items, bill number 7752, the city council will take action on an ordinance amending the ordinance number 7540 relative to transferring of easements from the city of Papa Bluff to telecommunications management LLC.
Move for first reading.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of bill number 7752. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Smith.
In accordance of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, amending ordinance 7540, transferring easements from the city of Papa Bluff to telecommunications management LLC.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number 7752. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Smith.
In accordance of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, amending ordinance 7540, transferring easements from the city of Papa Bluff to telecommunications management LLC.
Motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of 7752. Do we have any comments or questions in regards to this?
Just to remind the council what it was, is when we originally dropped it, I accidentally used the DB, New Wave Communications, instead of their legal name, so we have to change that to transfer easements to the legal name. That's all there is.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman McGarrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes and it passes.
This time, I'll ask Mayor Pro Tim Russian to take over for item BB.
Action required item for bill number 7753, city council will take an action, an ordinance selecting an insurance broker for the city of Papa Bluff relative to property and casualty insurance.
Move for first reading of 7750.
Second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In accordance of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, selecting an insurance broker for property and casualty insurance for the city of Papa Bluff.
Move for second reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
In accordance of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, selecting an insurance broker for property and casualty insurance for the city of Papa Bluff.
Move for adoption.
Second.
All in favors? No, we go to any discussion? The only comment that I would like to make is, what I had hoped to have been able to do was see the methods of evaluating our insurance needs from the recommended insurance company to see how their methodology would be for, and how they were assessed on a quarterly or yearly basis, to see that we're properly insured, not overinsured, and not have insurance on either non-active or not, or assets not owned by the city. I did appreciate the time and Aon came forward, and for his community, and were able to ask questions that we had, did not feel we had that opportunity at this time. Since the total basis of obtaining the bid was for the opportunity to have savings, do not feel that I could assess that at this time, so therefore, I can't really vote at this time to accept that. Other than that, what do you recall?
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman McGarrett.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
No.
It's a 5-1 vote, and it passes.
Moving on, do we have a city manager's report?
No, Madam Mayor, other than the items I already discussed, I didn't have anything further at this time unless there's any questions at this point I can help answer.
Madam Mayor, seeing no questions, I would make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.